So next one.
Alright, so let me, um, I'm, and I'm just assuming this, uh, it's a class. We're fifty-nine, we're gonna call this five time, just to, uh, alright, so let me call this, uh, regular meeting for our finance to order. Today is Tuesday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, uh, participating in this hybrid meeting in person. I have, um, uh, board member, uh, Lorraine Pesky, uh, Dan Ian Seau, um, Jim Wright, board member, Mark Bushka, board member Christopher Anderson, and I'll see if Chris Benson is on, he is not, okay. Uh, so board member, um, Anderson and Bushka are participating via Zoom. Before we get into the agenda, would please stand before the five.
Mr. President.
America.
Which was standing, one nation, together, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very, uh, the, uh, was mine, um, you know, having the members of the public in the, oh yes, but let me just call it the same. The record, uh, I'm not interested in Washington, moving to the public.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Second, and second thing, Mr. Pesky, uh, on my favor, uh, any opposed? There being no public members who will move right into an unentertained motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. So who can, Mr. Wright? It's good. And second, by Mr. Seau. Just announcing it, and how is it nice? Ian Seau, Ian Seau. Thank you, I'm quite beside. Um, I, we motioned in a separate, uh, question seven minutes. On my favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
What abstentions? Thank you.
Also abstain.
Uh, and Mr. Anderson, thank you. Going into eight oh three, uh, I will introduce a motion to, or to, um, I don't need a motion for this. Um, I'm just gonna open this up, this is a presentation, uh, by city treasurer Dan Farley, um, just to update the board on what occurred with the recent, uh, city bond sales. But here, okay.
So our, our S and P bond rating is classified at double A minus. And our S and P short-term rating for bond anticipation notes is classified as SP one plus, uh, which is the highest short-term rating offered to a city from S and P. So first, I'd like to say that's attributed to our mayor, our city council, and the board of finance for keeping us on the right financial path uh, by adhering to the standards and guidelines that we've set, so thank you for that. We had our, our bond note sale on, uh, March first of this year. Uh, we went out to bid for eighteen million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, for bands, which is nine million for bond anticipation notes. We received four bids. The low bidder, the low bidder, the lowest interest rate we got was from Piper Sandler. Um, but they only offered to buy fifteen million dollars, the worth of the eighteen million four hundred and fifty thousand notes that we had available. So we're guessing that that's the amount that they had probably pre-sold. So we accepted their bid. And then the, oh, I'm sorry, and the, uh, net premium they offered us for that was forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. That resulted in a total purchase price fifteen thousand forty-six thousand, I'm sorry, fifteen billion forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. At a net interest cost of three point one eight, seventy-one percent. Uh, the remaining bands of the three million four hundred and fifty thousand were awarded to the second bidder, Jeffries LLC. Net premium they offered us was twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents, uh, resulting in a total purchase price of three million four hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. At a net interest cost of three point three-two-five-one percent. So, uh, by the anticipation note, it is a municipal bond. It was principal and interest payments are secured by future bond issues. Because it's a short-term investment, uh, in this case, one year, we're offered a lower interest rate than you would get if it were to be a bond. And it's paid over, uh, a bond is paid over a long duration, uh, resulting generally in higher interest rate. So our checks are, twenty twenty-three bond payments will be made over a twenty-year period. And the bond anticipation notes will be utilized to help fund the new high school, middle school project. And those will be paid back in a one-year period. The twenty twenty-three bond sale, uh, went out to bid for seventeen million two hundred and fifty thousand. And of that, seven million two hundred and fifty thousand is for road work, ten million dollars is for the new school. Interestingly enough, we received sixteen bids. In the past, uh, I think the most we've ever gotten was somewhere between the seventh and eighth. Uh, the best bidder was Jeffries LLC. They offer a premium of one million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents. And that was over our value for the seventeen million two hundred and fifty thousand that we were looking for, for the purchase price. Or making that a total of eighteen million nine hundred and nine thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents. And that was at a true interest cost of three point three-six nine nine nine. And just to give a little background, uh, before we had the bid process, we were given some information from, uh, Bill Lindsey from News that these are financial advice. And he sent us some, uh, comparable towns so we could guess the, what we were going to be looking there to do some planning. So that's back on February twenty-third. Uh, they had a sale in Colony, New York. Their town then sold thirty-one million twenty of the bonds. And they were basically looking for, so they, they fit the same category that we do. Uh, Colony received seven bids on their bonds. And they were purchased at an effective rate of three point five nine seven. So we received three point three-six nine nine nine. Uh, and we were anticipating somewhere between three point seven five and four percent. So we actually took quite well. On the notes, the information they had given us, once again, our, our bid went on a three-one, uh, these dates were February twenty-third. So they were very close to, uh, the same date that we went out to bid. But you gotta remember, it was a rising interest rate environment as well. So Colony, New York, for their bands, uh, they received six bids at a, an effective rate of three point six nine seven. Uh, we got three point one eight seven one percent, uh, from Piper Sandler for the fifteen million. And the balance from Jeffries, uh, we received the interest rate of three point three-two-five-one. So once again, we beat what we, what had, uh, proven to be the bottom grade at the time. And a matter of fact, we had anticipated, we thought that we might do a little better because of our standard and force rating of the bands at the SP one plus. So we had anticipated three point three-seven five, somewhere between there and three point five percent. So that concludes my report. But very pleased then how everything went. Uh, I don't, so when we have a bond sale, Bill plugs in all the people that are interested in, participate. Puts it on his computer screen, and then at eleven o'clock, when the note sale happens, it's like watching a horse race. It just scrolls on the screen and all the different rates are coming. So it's, it's pretty exciting, actually, it's, it's fun to watch. And, um, I guess the last item, this is the, uh, official statement that we have to prepare, uh, for the people that are bidding on it. They utilize this information, so it's extremely helpful in their making their decisions on what they're going to do this far as bid process. So let's include who does that. Uh, this is a compilation of, uh, myself, the finance department, and Bill Lindsey. I probably won't know like two and fifty percent, or three and fifty or sixty percent.
Well, I can be, I can even more like seven to eighty, yes, yeah. The, uh, it is an incredible amount of work, um, and it's comprehensive. It's not only, um, providing all the details about the, um, fiscal health of the organization, um, but also what is the economic outlook. So economic development is part of that discussion and, uh, you know, board, uh, how well your boards are monitoring, um, all of the budgets, uh, monitoring the expenses, um, and, um, staying true to policies and practices. So this really is, uh, it's a test of the strength, um, it's more the gesture of fiscal health. You know, it's a, it's a test of the strength of the organization, where, where are we headed and, um, how soon can we get there?
It's a hundred and forty-seven pages.
Because of what was put together, was there much about the, um, ARCA money and all that kind of, of thing? Or was it prior to that? So I, I just wondered whether they were all interested in, in that, and what we got, how we decided to spend it. Or is that not yet because of what we put this?
I think the new piece that, that would take that into consideration is the, um, the, the construction of capital.
Well, yes, I mean, we're talking about how do we manage things? And it's clear that there are communities in Connecticut that have not managed their ARCA money very well. So I can say, if I can, uh, it was very much a part of the dialogue. Um, this official statement, when, um, when Dan says this is a hundred and fifty pages of information about the city, this is a hundred and fifty pages of the current status of things. So you started working on this, I know you were on vacation, you started working on it right before you went on vacation. So the end of January, you came back in the middle of February. The, um, meeting with the bond rating companies was the end of February.
Last week of February.
Right, so this was literally six weeks, six weeks of pulling this official statement together. And it did include, um, the ARCA money. Um, and again, a lot of these, um, test questions that they're giving us is less about how much? How much did you have to spend and more about what was your process?
Yeah.
What were you doing to spend it? And that's when we talked about the ARCA subcommittee. And, uh, I did a whole timeline of, uh, from, you know, the final ruling that happened or was released by the US Treasury, all the city council approvals, um, the, um, the variations of the budget, the subcommittee doing, uh, side improvement grants, doing, um, community improvement grants. So that's also a part of that, um, that discussion in the end, Q and A.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
It's real time, it's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's all the, the standard force interview process that you would ask us about. So basically, it's, it's the things, stuff that they're looking for, it's what's appeared, uh, but I don't know if they necessarily read the entire thing. So the mayor vocalizes it to them during the interview process with Robin and I. And, um, they, they, I mean, the interview process, you said the first just, some of the bidders are, you didn't even, you didn't even, no, no. So it's, it's, it's a one-time bid, the bid deadline is, let's say, in this case, we have the, the bond anticipation notes was eleven o'clock, and the bond itself was eleven-thirty. So at eleven o'clock, you can literally see the thing start scrolling on the screen. They're waiting, you know, they don't submit the notes.
They need to watch, watch out, but one minute.
That's it. We don't know.
The board will see that we, yeah.
Yeah, we like to see a lot.
Yes, right, yes. Sixteen was pretty remarkable. And Dan says it's exciting, well, it's an exciting thirty seconds. It's like, what, that's it, that's all there is? And then you have to sit and wait for the verification of this. So, you know, we'll know what that type of bid is, and then, um, Bill Lindsey, um, from News stats, um, does all the verification, does all the, um, the phone calls back and forth. Sitting in a room with us, it was, uh, Dan, Robin, myself, Bill Lindsey, um, Sandra Dawson from Portland, Portland, um, um, you know, and this is really, uh, it is, it's a fascinating process. So we've become kind of skilled, and I think this is our fourth time doing this. Um, it doesn't get any easier, to be honest with you. It's still a lot of stress. Um, that S and P rating call, which I don't know why I had it in my calendar for two-thirty and was visiting our people at Lake Bridge. Um, and also my phone was ringing because the call was starting without me. So, um, I'm trying to participate en route to the office, but, um, it all came together.
Except when you did the debt zone.
Yeah, right, right, right. Let's do it, right, just before lunch, there was definitely the zone, so.
But I guess the most exciting part is when the interest rates come in lower than what you anticipated. And the premiums come in higher.
So those interest rates, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we understand because what you're going to see over the next several years is that debt service role in our budget. So, um, that's, that is the, um, net interest rate. Um, so if you look in the, um, pages that were attached, um, News stats, uh, prepared, you'll see, uh, page three of that report, it's the debt service schedule. Actually, before that, you'll see the, um, coupon rates for the seventeen million dollars that was offered. Uh, the coupon rates, you know, are four, between four and five percent. But because of that premium that was paid, uh, it, it's essentially, uh, it reduces the coupon rates. So, um, in those years moving forward, as we, um, look at these and the impact that it has on our budget, you'll see those interest rates are different than what you, what's reported here because what's reported here is that net. There's a, that one, net interest rate.
Yeah, net interest cost.
And that's, net interest cost. Um, and to that point, on page three of this report, you'll see the debt service schedule. So for the seventeen million dollars in bonds, the bond issued seventeen million, you'll see in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, um, that ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, we're going to have to fold eight hundred and five thousand five hundred dollars of interest into our debt service. And for the, um, that's what the, and then page six is the, um, debt service of three hundred and forty-seven thousand fifty dollars. And at the end, is that in here? So, and the reason that they keep, they're working down by, um, purpose, school, city purposes, school purposes. So what you're gonna see is this one point one million dollars of, um, debt service while I through our budget. The, um, premium that was received with the bond sales will essentially wash that out for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. But in the twenty twenty-five fiscal year, next year at this time, when we're working on our budget, you're going to see two point seven million dollars of debt service. And that's the big hit. Now, red, over the years, you know, this, this reduces, and that's where, when we were looking at this, we were looking at the, you know, the twenty-year blended rate impact of taxpayers, you know, was less than a one million increase. Um, but, uh, unfortunately, in real life, what happens is, you know, your entrusted principal in the first year is the biggest payment. So next year at this time, we're going to be facing some changes. Yeah. Uh, Chris Anderson, yeah. Yes, question. Is there a meaning of downgrade? No, that is not a downgrade. That's the same, double A, yeah, double A minus. Was it positive outlook, I thought? Was it double A minus for the positive outlook?
I, I think that was in their narrative, I don't know if that's considered present, but, but in their narrative, it, it did say.
So, all in all, and I will also just add, um, my, express my gratitude, uh, to Dan and Robin because, uh, in January, um, I could see that the interest rates were, um, increasing, the feds were increasing the prime rates. Um, and, um, I was getting a little concerned that, uh, and the school project, construction was happening. It was, it never stopped for a winter, it just kept bombing. So we were watching the payments that were, um, coming out of the general fund, we'd been floating those payments. But we reached a point where I said I was not comfortable floating a ten million dollar, um, uh, outflow. And so I called everybody together and I said, I think we can't wait until May to do this bond sale. We need to do it soon with them later, Bill Lindsey, uh, Sandra Dawson, Dan and Robin, but they all pulled everything together. And like I said, I, I think I had that conversation in the middle of January. Um, Dan started working that right away, he was, um, he had a vacation order scheduled, came back, hit a really hard. Um, and based on what the interest rates, what's happening still with the feds, I think timing is from now. I think it's re-reading to May, I don't, I don't remember what we do with the, the interest rates or, um, or the bond market. Because that was the other thing, you know, the bond market is, um, volatile, so. Any other questions for Dean or Robin?
Uh, this is, this is a little question, but let me, this, this has come off, wrong, off sound. Yes, so each, each one of the bidders, uh, wires the funds to where, it's channeled through a broker or US bank transfers the funds from them to directly to our running account.
So it's, it's sitting in the, well, whole money sitting in the account.
It, yeah, it's, it's in the bank, kind of like.
But we pay a lot of those bills already, so then, then Robin will transfer.
So they don't trip, they don't trip a lot of market payments.
It's, you know, right, we get it all.
And to that point, so, uh, one of the other, uh, reasons, um, or you have a motivation for me to figure out going out to a bond a little bit earlier was the state has also, um, adopted a, um, every other month, uh, payment of reimbursement, excuse me. So our building committee has been very, very, um, per seferous about getting their invoices submitted to the state. But then there was lack of time, the state wasn't reimbursing us within thirty days. And then they said it's going to be sixty days between reimbursement checks. So that's where, you know, the, the, um, comfort level of infusing funds and reading a little bit longer just wasn't setting well with any of us. To Mr. Wright's question, um, yes, so that lump sum comes in. And I know that, um, Dan, uh, was immediately looking at, uh, because as those interest rates are being raised by the, um, by the feds, um, the good stuff, the good news is the interest rates that we're getting on our investments is also going up. But the tricky part of all of that is we can't earn more interest than what we're paying out on these things. There's this arbitrage that has to be taken into consideration. So those are the other things that, um, where you have, you know, twenty-seven million dollars sitting in the account, earning four percent if you're paying four percent, you wanna make sure that you're not in a situation where now it becomes untaxable. So those are the other things that Dan and Robin have to, um, look at.
We're actually meeting, uh, Robin and I are having a conversation with Sandra Dawson, who's, we, we, yeah, about the arbitrage. So that we make sure, we're gonna set a schedule so we know where we're at and how often I can move those funds to make sure that we keep the stable unit.
It's natural. Any other questions? Alright, uh, the next item on the agenda is, um, it's just, uh, and uh, again, because in this official statement and the S and P rating calls, they're really focused on processes, what are the processes, what are you doing? They're making sure that your boards are saying a type of things. Um, and admittedly, um, it had been quite a while since the board finance had received budget performance reports from the board of education. So thank you, um, Heather, for reaching out to the board of education. Um, we, um, reminded them that they must send us those reports on a monthly basis so that this board can receive them and review them. So, um, with that said, for the record, gonna have a motion to accept the receipt of the budget for, the board of education budget performance report. And we then, we actually could see, uh, through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So who?
Thank you, Mr. Bush, thank you. Second, second, Mr. Wright. And this doesn't require any discussion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, question areas? Uh, and certainly when you have a chance, um, to look through this, if there are questions, um, I know that the superintendent is hoping to go over deeper into the board of finance members. Um, and she was inviting you to submit those questions to her. Um, I would only ask if you could CC my office, that way I can make sure that we're following my most. Uh, I have number five, I will entertain a motion to consider this by departments. So, Mr. Pesky. Second, Mr. Wright, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, if anybody wants to add, we see the English department. Anything, Robin?
Just moving along in the budget process, um, and we are getting to the end of the audit.
Questions, slide. Right, we'll move ahead and say someone to the motion to consider business fund news, mayor and members. Who? This, I, this, I. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Uh, all of them there, uh, any opposed? So, um, anything to, um, add tonight, Mr. Bush, any questions or?
No, not really tonight, but when's our next meeting, is it April eighteenth? Joint meeting with the, uh, board of ed?
Yes. Yeah, uh, you know, and I, I had it scheduled for the eighteenth. But I know that the board of education's budget doesn't drop. But I know that the Board of Education's budget doesn't drop until the fifteenth of April. So we'll take a look at that. And, um, if that's not sufficient time for the board, this board, the Board of Finance, to have a chance to review that and need more time, we can certainly be flexible on, um, scheduling.
Well, the reason I, the reason I mention that is that is actually tax day.
It is tax day. All right, well then, we're gonna move that. All right, I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Anderson, anything this evening?
No, just like everybody else, twenty-five days and counting. So I'll be, I'll be more useful later.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Has a breakfast? Yes. Yeah, I apologize. Um, it did, it, the, it was filed on February twenty-eighth. Uh, and I know, but I cannot have it in my, um,
I can send it out.
Would you please? Yeah.
It's usually, I mean, even in the newspaper.
I think it was a little article in the, it was in the brass tax column. Um, I will tell you, um, it is, um, disappointing growth. Our real estate growth was point one, maybe point eleven. Um, personal property was a little bit better. Uh, motor vehicles obviously, um, was the greatest percentage vote we know for the mill rate, cab and motor vehicles. Um, and the, um, states moved to utilizing the MSRP versus, uh, the NADA, um, that equation leaves us very much in the air as to what that's going to translate as far as revenue is concerned. And I know that Robin and I just met with, um, Tom DeSasino, our associate this afternoon. And he was, it's, they're the same, you know, circling, uh, the, you know, the, the topic with no real direction at this point in time. And the next evaluation is in twenty, it's, uh, ten one, twenty-twenty-three.
Ten one, okay, is this a full?
No, this is a men's psychologist, the statistical.
Thank you.
The name is right.
Yes, I just would like to, uh, thank, uh, the mayor, all the work that anybody that goes and makes a job in the government.
Thank you. Anyway, we're about to ask for Department heads and, um, Kim is here, Deputy Controller. Anything to add, please?
No, it's been great working with Dan, working with lots of people, should, Robin and a lot of people who work on events and bonds, so I'm really trying to keep all those things together.
Uh, and, uh, to that point, I will say, um, Kim has been learning the deputy treasurer's position because that position, our deputy treasurer, is moving into our W P C A. Um, so we are currently, um,
She's gone.
She's officially gone and Kim is now doing double duty. Um, Robin is doing triple duty. Um, but, uh, there is an opening in that department. So if any of you know anybody that wants a good job in the finance department for a great organization, they should get an application and. All right, I have nothing else to add, um, and they're being moved for the business report. I will let you change questions for Charles. So, thank you, Mr. Wright, same by this, Chris Key, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? We are adjourned. Thank you.